Okay, excuse the makeshift gavel. Good evening, members and also officers and members of the public and fellow councillors, and welcome to this evening's special executive meeting. It is a special executive meeting this evening. Before we actually roll into the main formalities of the evening, can I just take this opportunity to welcome to this first meeting our interim managing director, Tom Hallworth. So, welcome, Tom. So, if I can now move into the main meeting, and we have apologies for absence.
Thank you, Leader. We received apologies from councillor Hall and councillor Barton.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest, Mr Taylor?
No, received, Leader.
Thank you. We then move to the main item, which is item three, which is the Waverley Borough Council Local Plan Part One, Proposed List of Modifications. And that's the report, which runs pages five to eighty-four. And I have a number of speakers for that item. So, if I could invite the first speaker, councillor Williamson, please.
Thanks very much. Should I speak from here? Can you all hear me?
You can indeed, thank you.
Do you really want me to stand up? It's okay.
No, you're happy like that, that's fine.
I'm absolutely fine. I think this is very important, a decision that's been made this evening. And I have made some notes, so that I don't miss anything out. But I will be quite brief. I'd like to specifically focus on the changes which affect Farnham in the local plan. These proposed changes being considered tonight will undermine, to some extent, the integrity of the Farnham neighbourhood plan. It's the only made plan within the borough, and it's got full, it's carrying full strength. I'm sure we'll be told at some time this evening how this undermining will be mitigated. Unfortunately, the level of uncertainty that it puts on the plan will not in any way be measured by those expensive barristers, who presumably we've got opinions from, or are experts on planning that we have within our staff, or for that matter, by anybody in this council. These decisions, the strength, how it's undermined, will be made by either the Secretary of State or some faceless inspector in Bristol, who will no doubt be armed by some fairly powerful arguments produced by another set of barristers who have been funded by developers. There are a number of possible solutions, some of which I've discussed with the leader earlier, which would allow an increase in the housing supply and meet the inspector's demand. And there would be no need to weaken, and it is weakening, weaken the Farnham neighbourhood plan. In my view, short-term expediency, and I say that deliberately, expediency, is being used by Waverley to try and get the local plan approved. And it's to the detriment of the already-made neighbourhood plan. What's being proposed this evening is a convenient way of working, rather than the right way of working. During the two weeks of the inspector's hearing on the local plan, he said many things, I'm sure he did, stacks of things, he talked for two weeks. And I see absolutely little value in cherry-picking particular points from what he said, or what he didn't say, to either make the case one way or the other. I'm sorry to say that I think this report, in fact, falls, is guilty of doing just that.
Thirty seconds remaining.
It's up to this council to do the right thing for the borough. And weakening the strength, the strength of the neighbourhood plan doesn't seem the best way. There are alternative solutions which are available, and they should be followed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Williamson. I now have councillor Gray.
Thank you, Leader. I don't want to repeat the things that the previous councillors have said, but I also express concern about the allocation, and certainly the methodology that's been used for it. If you take those places in the east of the borough, you've got, prior to this increase, you've got Cranley that was at thirty percent, Oldfold which was at twenty, Dunstfold which was seventeen percent. They obviously concern me more, for those three, but I'm very sympathetic to other people's problems with the increase. And we've then basically upped those, in terms of Cranley, Oldfold and Dunstfold. There's a lot of pressure on that part of the borough. Certainly, it seems to me that very little thought was put in to move into a small village like Dunstfold, which has four hundred and sixty-seven houses. To put another twenty houses may not seem very important, but it's actually critical to a small village. They were slightly over-ambitious, taking the eighty in the first place. At eighty, it was seventeen percent increase, as compared to similar locations like Chert, which was two percent, and you've got Brentham, two percent, Hilford, slightly higher at five percent, and Warrish at one percent. Now, I know there's special reasons, but we've got to have a look at that, and then to turn around and put more houses on there, especially in the area where we're already putting two thousand six hundred into Dunstfold Park. I mean, I think it would not have been wrong to basically leave some of those around Dunstfold Park the same, and put the numbers, put another hundred on Dunstfold Park itself. I don't think we've thought this through particularly well, I don't think we've justified it, and I think we're going to have a lot of resistance from this proposal, from people in Waverley, from those in the east and those in the west. And I wish we'd had more discussion prior to this proposal coming here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gray. Councillor Mrs Coburn?
Yeah, I don't know where to start, really. I agree, I haven't spoken to either councillor Gray or to councillor Williamson about this at all, and yet I'm in total agreement, in fact, slightly stronger, I think, than councillor Williamson for a change. I don't think you've undermined our neighbourhood plan, I think you've given it two fingers. I think the numbers, as councillor Gray said, have been rushed. I don't see any logic in those numbers, and I've put them through all my mathematical friends to say, give me the logic for these numbers, because I can't see it. I think rushed is the very word for this. We are affecting the lives of every single resident in this borough, and yet we've just come up with arbitrary figures, we've not thought this through. You're going to tell me there's been lots of things going on behind the scenes, that's fine, but we live out there, we work with these people, we spent four years doing that neighbourhood plan. You've got one made neighbourhood plan in this borough, and you can't even respect that as you go forward. We always knew there would have to be some form of review at the end of the neighbourhood plan, we've always said so. We've worked openly and honestly with your officers throughout the entire process. And so to read what you have effectively done, scupper the plan, they haven't undermined it, John, it's scuppered. We have to go back to, going out, we have to go back to consultation, we have to go back to referendum. I have a celebration plan for the referendum, because so many people, certainly some of the people down the end, worked really hard to get a yes vote. We couldn't. We were banned from speaking because we were part of the plan. So, all these people up and down the town went out and got the yes vote, got ten thousand yes, eighty-eight percent, in fact, it's eighty-eight point something, so it's nearly eighty-nine percent, if you think about it. That's what we did, as a plan. Now, we always knew we were going ahead, we didn't want to go ahead, you put your plan back. We carried on because we'd already consulted. So, we always knew there was going to be a shortfall, we always knew at the end of our plan, we were going to have to do some form of review to redress any shortfall, we always knew that. But that was always going to be at the end of the plan. The plan, which is very front-loaded, ten years' worth of two thousand two hundred homes, that's what was in the plan. In fact, Matthew Evans actually complained that it was too front-loaded, and said, what are you going to do in the last five years of the plan? And the idea always was to review it, and then see where the shortfall was, and then allocate sites. Every single site in the Schla, now the La, was looked at in detail, and the people of Farnham chose the sites that they thought they could live with in the town at the moment. There may in the future be other sites, I don't know what's going to come in, but all those sites that are currently there have been assessed. And I, for one, have bought every blum and inch of them, every single site. We know exactly what the sites are, we know exactly why we've refused them. You come along, single-handedly, you pluck out a figure, and basically say, back to square one, back to the drawing board. And I don't understand how you can do that without talking to the parishes, talking to the towns, taking the time. I agree with councillor Gray, it just seems to us like an unnecessary rush, get it in, there must be some reason for it. No figures on Dunstfold, why not? Nobody's telling us why, no figures on Dunstfold at all. It's supposed to be proportionate, sorry, how much?
Thirty seconds.
Right, it's supposed to be proportionate, nothing on Dunstfold. Proportionate means fair, equal distribution, some method of doing it equally. I'm sorry, that is not an equal distribution. If you don't put some of that, and the other thing is you've got double counting, because if you don't put the eight hundred, whatever you can add up, onto the Dunstfold, if you put those onto the greenfield sites at Farnham and Cranley, as you've done in those figures, you're actually double counting, so we're going to have the developers thinking they can build eight hundred, and in fact, they can't.
Thank you, councillor Coburn. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Leader. As you might expect, I've had a number of emails and phone calls from members and residents in respect of this. I agree with everything that's been said, particularly in respect of what councillor Coburn has said about Dunstfold Park. If we don't put, if we don't do what the inspector suggested at the local plan examination, and put three thousand or more at Dunstfold Park, then that is going to invite him just to lob that on. We can't go forward with this as it is, because it's inviting further development. But there's so much wrong with this, there are so many holes in this, whether we're talking about us infringing upon the green belt for extraordinary reasons up at Oxford Ridge, or up at Oxford and Eshing Lane, sorry, Aaron's Hill and Eshing Lane, without Guildford doing it. Well, surely if we can do it, Guildford can do it. We haven't looked at the options. We've got to look at the options for goddling before we just decide that we're going to go and infringe upon the green belt. Green belt is meant to be sacrosanct unless there are extraordinary circumstances, and that's not in here. We don't have any consideration whatsoever of in combination effects on the well and heaths. There are so many things wrong with this. We're told in our committee papers, at paragraph eleven in your agenda papers in front of you, that we've got, there is now a limit to the amount of housing that can be put in in Cranley. Well, they thought they had a limit already, I'm quite sure. But actually, is it a limit? No, we're told it's not a limit, actually, it's a minimum. How can your papers be telling you that it's a limit when it's said, when it's the opposite, in actual fact? So, it has been suggested to me, apart from the things that have been mentioned, I won't go on about the Farnham neighbourhood plan, others have covered it well, there is a suggestion as chair of ONS that I call this in. Well, obviously, in order to do that, that's not an easy decision to make, because we don't want to hold things up, but we've got to get this right, and what we haven't got is something that's right and sound. This proposal raises so many vital questions, it can't be done in a blind hurry by party line, without all the evidence and without due scrutiny. And we don't have the evidence. I've seen no evidence that the inspectors view that Guildford and Woking needs to be bailed out by us. It's actually true, there's been no evidence in front of us to support that. We have to question that, rather than simply go along with it. There is no appropriate assessment, that should be driving this, not the opposite. You shouldn't make imaginary mitigation that you're going to invent in the future, fit the plan that you've got in front of you. You need an appropriate assessment, you need an SCA, you don't have those, as far as I know, you don't have them in front of you, because I asked for them today and they haven't been provided. So, what I would like is, obviously, I would need Conservative support in order to call this in from the Environment ONS Committee, and I would therefore need the party line to allow that. So, what I'm really asking now is, will you allow, as councillor Gray was suggesting, will you allow us to do this properly, to look at this properly before we go forward with it? If you are confident that this proposal withstands scrutiny, and I'm sure that's what you're claiming, then please either defer your decision to allow us to scrutinise this properly, or confirm to us that the Conservatives-
Thirty seconds.
Thank you very much. Or confirm to us that the Conservatives are free of any party line, so that they can support a call-in. For the sake of our borough, please confirm that you will allow scrutiny before this important decision is made. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. Councillor MacLeod?
Thank you, Leader. You've had a lot of criticism from the other speakers, and I might just start by saying I support and agree with most of it. But I'd like to make a few less critical comments to start with. I do understand the need for the borough to have a sound local plan which satisfies Inspector Mr Boar. You have the problem that you've been stuck with this requirement to provide fifty percent of Woking's unmet need, that seems like a ridiculous idea. I don't actually see how building houses in Woking will satisfy Woking's unmet need. People who want to live in Woking will buy houses in Woking, they wouldn't be buying houses in Cranley or in Hazelmead, or even in Farnham. But there are very bad consequences. If we don't get a local plan, we lose all control of planning, and we lose the local community infrastructure levy, which is vitally important to provide the infrastructure that goes along with the local plan. So, whatever we do, we must get a local plan that can be made in the next eighteen months. But I'd like to put perhaps a little bit of a reality check against this local plan by mentioning one or two figures. In the first sixteen years of this century, between 2001 and 2016, about three thousand eight hundred houses were built in Waverley, and that's an average of two forty per annum. There's only one year in that period in which over four hundred were built, and two in which over three hundred were built. So, that's the picture of what's been happening in the real world in Waverley. And now entering what I would describe as a fantasy world, where we're being told that we now have to produce an average of five hundred and ninety houses a year, which is something like two and a half times the previous build rate. And it's even worse than that, actually. It's a nineteen-year plan, of which four years have already passed, and in this first four years, we continue to build it at the certain rate that maybe there's also already built. So, that actually means that in the remaining fifteen years, if you work it out, it's a very simple calculation, we have to do six hundred and seventy-seven houses a year, which is almost three times the build rate that's come down on in the past. And the developers seem to have told us that over the next four years, we're going to be able to build an average of eight hundred and sixty, if you look at the housing trajectory. And in four years from now, we're going to be building fourteen hundred rep houses in this borough. Now, that all just seems to me to be complete fantasy, it's not going to happen, actually. But you have to pretend it's going to happen, because we have to have a local plan that satisfies Mr Boar and satisfies the government. So, we have to produce something that says we're going to do it. So, we might as well do something that's the right thing, the best thing for the borough. And building what councillor Coburn said, actually, we should actually be protecting the greenfields in the borough by putting the extra thirteen hundred and fifty houses on Dunstfold Park. Now, I appreciate there is a potential problem, in that we've been told that Dunstfold not necessarily be able to achieve that in the running period of the plan. But the thing I'd say to that, that is far, far more achievable than the other side of the plan, if you look at the figures I've been speaking about. So, what would I like to see happen, actually? What I would like, first, I would like to see, as others have a validity, I would like to see more consultation. We had a very good site blocking previously, we should have actually had a sign meeting, and we could have armed out some of these plans and some of these problems then. But as I say, what I would like to see happen is that we-
Thirty seconds.
We put these extra houses onto the Dunstfold thing. The final thing I'd say about Dunstfold, I fully understand that lots of people don't want anything to happen at Dunstfold, but Dunstfold is a binary decision. We'll either do nothing at Dunstfold if the objectives succeed, and we'll have to completely rethink the local plan, or we should be putting the full thirteen hundred extra and building somewhere four thousand houses in Dunstfold, solving our problem. So, that's my comments and summary. Thank you, Leader.
Councillor MacLeod, thank you very much. I think it's important to just start with where we are in terms of consultation and the local plan itself. Now, clearly, that will be coming back to full council once the main modifications consultation is concluded, and everyone, towns, parishes and individual residents and businesses within the borough, will all have the opportunity to comment positively or negatively about the varying modifications. Now, what we do need to remember very clearly, and I would like to emphasise, is that, to the point that was made earlier, we are working very closely with the inspector through his case officer. So, there is ongoing dialogue, he is reviewing the work that is being done, he is then feeding back and giving a very strong steer on what he wants to see, and what he will subsequently, we hope, end up endorsing, to allow us to actually deliver a sound, evidence-based local plan. As a Farnham councillor, as a resident in Farnham, but also as leader of the council, I'm very well aware of the sensitivities in Farnham, I'm very well aware of the concerns about the neighbourhood plan. Everyone's worked incredibly hard on that. We, as a borough council and the local planning authority, along with Farnham, fought a very difficult legal challenge to that very plan. So, you know, officers have worked hard on that as well, and we are aware of the concerns. We've tried our best to actually address those concerns in terms of some of the additional wording in the addendum, to allow Farnham to actually make the decision as to whether they want to bring those modifications and those numbers through as part of the Part Two consultation, or should they wish to actually go out for an earlier review. We've also identified with the help of our officers and legal team additional NPPG guidance that can be used in terms of defending applications that are felt to be unsuitable or inappropriate in Farnham, as time goes on and as we have a sound and made local plan, should any applications that come forward be in conflict. So, we've looked very carefully at that, and from all the advice that we've received and that we, as councillors, are acting upon, it's felt by officers that that is something that we need to make sure we're all very clear on, and that officers would take into account when determining any future applications. Now, to the points that have been made about where there should and where there shouldn't be housing, uplifts in the villages and so forth, again, we've been very careful there, we have looked at a number of different scenarios, we've had to, so that there was a very clear audit trail. We're very conscious of the confines of Cranley. We're also aware that a number of other villages have indicated they will take some housing and are happy to do so. But what we also have to remember is that we can't put significantly large numbers of housing into constrained parts of the borough, because that then opens us up to a review of the green belt, and it opens us up to restarting some of the hearings. And that has been made very clear by the inspector today to us in terms of what the boundaries are, what we can do and what we can't do. So, we are in a difficult position, I think we're in a position that none of us wanted to be in, and we're here tonight having to make some difficult decisions, recommending and noting that we move forward with the modifications, and actually that we move to the consultation. Can I ask councillor Adams if you'd like to introduce the item?
Okay, thank you, Leader. In December, the council agreed the submission of the emerging local plan for inspection. That is the baseline that we've been working on. No decisions are required tonight. This report is an update on the progress of the examination, which is, will continue until the final report is produced by the inspector. At the end of the hearing, the inspector agreed some main modifications and some minor modifications. These were presented to him by the officers at the end of the hearing, and he said, yes, in essence, they're the ones you have to go away and work on. The planning team has been fulfilling these requests to ensure we have a sound plan. Most of you are, I'm sure, aware of the key issues: an increase in the housing requirement, changes to the green belt, a master plan for Dunstfold Park. The dialogue with the inspector has been progressing successfully. Officers have been in daily communication with the inspector, who is a programme manager, and he has responded properly to our suggested suggestions and questions. We believe that agreement with the inspector is now near enough to let you know that the main modifications will be ready for consultation on the fourth of September. The responses to the consultation will be sent directly to the inspector, and he will make a statement once he has considered these. We may then have to make some further final points, but hopefully then he will write his report and confirm that we have a sound plan for Waverley. So, this document in front of you describes all of the modifications that the inspector asked for. There are main ones and there are minor ones. Most of them, as you can see, relate to those key questions. These have been amended a few times, actually, since this document was published. The latest one is on the website. But this is changing still on a daily basis, so that, with minor modifications.
Thank you, councillor Adams. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Leader. Nobody's denying this is a very, very difficult situation we're in, and we are consulting, as the lead is already said, on a daily basis with the inspector, and bouncing things off him, and asking his advice and his steer. I don't think we can do any more than we're currently doing. I understand totally where Farnham in particular is on this issue, because, you know, I know personally that they've worked extremely hard on the neighbourhood plan, but I'm sure that in time we will be able to address those concerns, once we've got the final details from the inspector.
Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Leader. I would like to thank officers generally and specifically for the work in my board for the local plan development. I note the proposal to remove land from the green belt on Aaron's Hill. For the avoidance of doubt, this is not the land between St Mark's Church and Greenock School, which has been the subject of an earlier planning application. The proposed change to the green belt is between Aaron's Hill and Halfway Lane, and is immediately adjacent to the boundary between Waverley and Guildford. I had initial concerns about the change to the green belt, however- However, following discussions with residents and other interested parties, I've been encouraged to think we have a very real opportunity to develop the local community with affordable housing, new social facilities and also better pedestrian access to the railway station. I encourage responses to our revised local plan and Godalming's emerging local plan. I do note the consequence of revised plan is that Godalming can see its way to providing larger housing numbers between now and 2032 and will contribute to our sound local plan. Thank you leader.
Thank you councillor Bolton. Anyone else? We should speak councillor Dina.
Just really want to follow on from a point made by councillor Gray. We've spoken obviously about Allfold, Dunstfold and Cranley. And I look at the increase in Allfold, which, you know, up to a hundred and twenty-five houses for a village of less than three hundred and fifty. Do I want any additional numbers? Clearly I don't. You know, twenty-five is not a great deal of numbers, but I still wouldn't want twenty-five. But I do understand when I look at the Farnham people, you know, I can't be saying, well, you should be having my twenty-five. So I do understand, you know, from where they're coming from. So it's not about saying I shouldn't be taking any pain or Allfold shouldn't, because there's a lot of pain elsewhere. So, no, I'm not happy taking additional. I do understand why Allfold has to take, you know, a twenty-five percent increase. As much as I don't like it, I can understand why it has to happen. This is not a decision we're taking, this is what the inspector's actually dictated that we've got to go. So I'm not happy, but I can fully understand why we're having to go down this difficult road.
Thank you. Any other members wish to speak? No? Okay, so I think we need to be really clear that we are in ongoing dialogue. This is a part of the examination. The examination is not over. The hearings for the time being have finished, but we are still in the examination, within the examination process and being directed very closely and literally on what is like a daily basis at the moment by the inspector. We need to make it be clear that this process will continue to be ongoing. There may be other minor changes that the inspector comes forward with between now and the start of the consultation. He's already indicated that and officers have also clarified that that may be the case. And we are being challenged in terms of our number. We're being challenged in terms of increase because we have to take part of the Woking number, Woking's meet with the Woking unmet need. To the point raised by councillor MacLeod, it is, I know, difficult for many within Waverley to understand the connection to a certain extent with Woking and why that's the case. But this was very detailed examination at the hearing. And whilst we robustly defended our position, I know Wayne Beglin, who's our councillor, spent a great deal of time on that particular item. And we defended our position very robustly. We were told in our uncertain terms by the inspector that to have a sound local plan, we had to meet that increased number. And that meant we had to take part of the Woking unmet need. It may be that Guildford longer term takes on, but at the moment, we have to obviously purely look at what Waverley were given a very clear instruction to take. So that's clearly also had an impact on those numbers. I'd really encourage that everyone does respond to these modifications and not just residents, but the towns and parishes very clearly respond. What we need is, we need to move forward. We're not trying to rush this, but we do want to make sure that we keep this momentum that we've got following the hearings. The inspector has indicated very clearly that he wants us to meet quite strict timetable in terms of fulfilling the modifications and, you know, going through the process so that he then has the plan before him. We want plan-led development, no one's denying that. We want appropriate development. And the only way that we'll have appropriate development, that will then have the right funding for the infrastructure that we need and that our residents recognise we need, that comes with development, is to have a sound local plan. We don't want inspector or appeal-led development. We need a sound local plan. And the only way for us to have a sound local plan is to ensure that we can very clearly demonstrate that we've gone through the process in terms of going out to consultation on the proposed modifications. Councillor Hyman raised a very interesting point earlier because he asked a question about party line and party led. And it's not about this being party line or party led. If everyone wants to see a sound local plan that is adopted and we can then move forward with. So to that point councillor Hyman and to the wider audience, there is no whip here. We're not talking about party politics here, we're talking about having a sound local plan. In terms of the special executive tonight, we have an addendum to item three and that's page eight of your report, course. And page eight and it's item ten. And I'll read out the addendum for anyone who's watching or listening on the webcast. And it's related to the third sentence from the bottom of that page to be updated to read, "It is envisaged that the additional allocations for Farnham would be made through local plan part two or an early review of the Farnham neighbourhood plan following adoption of part one of the local plan and to ensure it remains up to date." The penultimate sentence, "There would be discussions with Farnham Town Council regarding the sites needed to deliver the uplift." And clearly that's something that we would want to start a dialogue on very soon so that we can start to work proactively together to look at how best we manage that. And Farnham Town Council are the group and the council that make the decision as to which they would want to go with, which of the options. Would it be an early review of the neighbourhood plan through part one or would it be working with us through part two? Colleagues, I'll move to the recommendations on the report. And the recommendation is that the executive note the list of proposed modifications for local plan part one is set out in annex two and endorse its submission to the local plan inspector. Sorry, I've got to revise. No, it's not being changed, sorry. So, apologies. The revised recommendation, which I believe has, has it gone out to all people?
It's on the website.
And it's on the website. Right, okay, apologies. So the revised recommendation is, it is recommended the executive note the list of proposed modifications to the local plan part one as set out in the revised annex two, including any final minor changes agreed with the inspector and gives delegated authority to the head of planning in consultation with the leader of the council and portfolio holder for planning to agree the final submission to the local plan examination inspector. Executive statistic.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you colleagues, the meeting is now-